All right, call meeting floor at 7:02. Start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with Earl Call.
Hey, Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Mr. Paray.
Present.
Mrs. McHugh.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Present.
Mrs. Bobstein.
Present.
Mrs. Durst.
Thank you.
Amendment of agenda.
There is a motion to add the agenda as presented. Mark.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have an introduction of our new board member, Susan Durst. So, I'd like to introduce her to the rest of the administration.
Miss McHugh.
So, we had two excellent candidates. So, we were very fortunate. They both spoke very highly of each other. So, that made it even more difficult. But Susan brings, you know, 38 years of leadership experience in administration. She's got a Master of Science in Administration. So, just a ton of experience, experience on boards. She's had three of her grandsons graduate from Memphis. She's got one in high school and four great-grandchildren in school, two as well. So, we're very fortunate to have her and I welcome her to board. Next up is the consent agenda. All right. Let me take a minute. Under tonight's consent agenda, you'll be approving the minutes from the special meeting of August 5th, 2019 as presented. You are also approving general fund bills in the amount of $210,880.27 and AP payroll checks in the amount of $14,662.78 for a total of $225,543.05 with checks numbered 64266 through 64333 and ACH transfers in the amount of $377,482.02 for a total of $602,943.87 with checks numbers 64297 through 64298 voided and additional bills in the amount of $276,828.72 with checks numbered 64334 through 64355 and no checks voided and sinking fund bills in the amount of $44,602.02 and no cents with checks numbered 40015 through 40017 and no checks voided. Under personnel, the resignations of Chris Sniezak, 8th grade boys basketball; Bonnie Karam, high school special ed teacher; Chad Deener, junior high girls basketball; Christine Morton, elementary special ed teacher; the hiring of Janie Wilkinson, social worker; Michael Walsh, high school special education teacher; Adam Rickert, 80% junior high teacher; Natasha Gatewood and Heather Block as sub aides; Dwayne Kidd as varsity football assistant coach; Nicholas Salgett as junior high football assistant coach; an additional assignment for Dalton Oki as varsity football assistant coach; and two changes of assignment, Wendy Fisher to sub aide and Patty Keller from junior high high school para pro to elementary para pro.
Wendy Fisher, it should be sub aide to food service cashier. That's it. Yeah.
Sub aide to food service cashier.
Yes.
All right. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mr. Paray. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, reports, athletics to start with.
I'm weighing on somebody. Could they maybe go first this time?
Sure. Let's move on to principals.
I can go first. No, that's okay. I'm ready. All right, so there's a lot of updates in the reports in regards to professional development that you can check out, but Mr. Goodme asked me to present about our new win time, what I need time for student intervention. So, we've spoke previously about response to intervention or RTI. So, win time is our response to the state recommendation for response to intervention. So, just a quick reminder, you guys can read through this, you all have a copy of the presentation, but response to intervention is how we intervene with our students who need the most support. So, we do some state and local assessing and then we group our students according to those results. We tier them. In tier one, being our students who are performing at grade level. Tier two, those students who are just below grade level. And tier three, those students who need the most intervention. In the past, which is on the next slide, we had, it was set up or structured so that our para professionals or aides were providing the intervention for students. Students were pulled at various times throughout the day, which made it difficult for scheduling and they were missing some content areas. And it was mostly just our tier three students who were being supported. So, in some of our workings with our 31A audit that we just had and talking to the people who give us our Title I funding, some best practices, and it really makes sense, is to have our most trained staff, our teachers, providing those interventions. So, changing to this win time or what I need time, and I'll show you how that works in a second, was really getting the students who need the most support in the hands of the teachers who have the most training to support them and doing so in a very strategic way. So, the first thing, what happens during win time, we have a master schedule we created. If you can click on that link, please, which is something we've never had at the elementary schools before. So, when we were going through our audits, they kept asking for this master schedule and we're like, oh my gosh, we don't know what that means. So, my lovely school improvement team took on the task of making this schedule. So, the ELA and math times and the win times are times that are uninterrupted now, so the secretaries hopefully won't be calling and interrupting during those times. And it's set up in a way that students, K5, all students will be receiving their intervention at the same time depending on their grade level. So, if you can just scroll up there. Oh, you're in the afternoon. Yeah. Okay, so if you see like kindergarten's win time, what I need time is from 8 o'clock until 8:30. So, during that time, all of our staff, all hands on deck, anybody who's available, will go in to provide interventions to students based on their needs. So, some students will be receiving support in ELA, English Language Arts. Some students will be receiving support in math. The greatest need is always reading though. So, if a student has their biggest deficit is reading and they're also struggling in math, the tie always goes to reading. So, we're making reading our priority. And there's also behavior interventions happening during that time. Our special ed students will be working in groups during that time and that, those students with IEPs may also be working with students that are at grade, not at grade level, but also struggling but not in special ed maybe just yet. So, the special ed students will be working with their peers as well and not just in a separate area. I'll move back to the other slide. And then, next one would be good. Okay, so this allows all students to get intervention and enrichment. So, you may be thinking, okay, what about my student who's at grade level or above and they won't need the intervention? So, those students will be getting enrichment at that time with a group as well. So, they might be working on test prep skills or they'll be working on the next grade level standards. They may be doing a reading group. It kind of just depends on how well they're performing in what area and that's how we'll decide to boost them up. So, this allows, like I said, for the all hands deck approach and if you look, here's just kind of a copy of the schedule. Our para professionals, all of our staff, special teachers, everybody is kind of busy at that time. So, if you click on the bottom, just the K intervention, you'll kind of get to see the bottom tab. So, all of those people, I just took the students' names off because obviously we can't talk about that, but, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people that will be with those kids, allowing for small group instruction, intervention and enrichment. So, we'll look at our Mstep data, our NWEA data, our DRA data and group students based on that. Students will work for six weeks with their support person and then they'll be reassessed and we'll regroup based on the data and if they've achieved that standard. Some students may not reach the standard and will continue to intervene and then we'll continue watching and those are the students that we would later maybe recommend for some further testing if there was a problem. So, this is, the teachers are super excited about this because it was really hard for them to make their schedule. Kids were here, kids were there, so this allows all students to have access to all the curriculum, providing 30 minutes of intervention and enrichment for K1, 2 students and 45 minutes for the upper L. So, really, we were talking about time being our biggest resource and we're always running out of it. So, this was just a way for us to make the best use of our time and our staff. And there's lots of information in there. If you have any questions later, you can reach me or if you have any questions now.
So, before, would they have been pulled out of class based on their need?
Yeah, so before, and it was just the tier three students because, just for time that way. And the paras would pull, or the math interventionist would pull students out to their room and they would work for that amount of time, missing usually science or social studies. And we always tried not to pull them out of the core content, but sometimes that wasn't possible.
How big are your groups?
None of, the groups of the students who are at grade level or higher are a little larger. Our groups for intervention are usually no larger than six. Yeah. And if a teacher does have more than that, then they'll break them up into two groups and they'll have another support person in there. So, we're really excited to try this out. We're going to start the second week of school.
What's the feedback from the specials and the para pro teachers for their time?
They're excited. It's an adjustment, but the paras are excited to be able to kind of work more within their realm, I think. They don't really have that training to be working with students who are struggling that much, so they're kind of excited to have some more project-based things to work on.
Yeah, I just agree. They've got all this time blocked. Are they, do we have to make up time elsewhere?
Nope. We fit it right into our schedule and that's why we made that master schedule. And actually, we're adding more time to our ELA block. Previously, our ELA block was 90 minutes and now it'll be 120. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
It's on you.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome. Congratulations. A little, I don't have the fancy PowerPoint as Susan does today, but she have excellent handwriting, by the way.
Thank you.
Excellent. Just wanted to update you on a couple of things as we get started. We're coming back to school tomorrow. It's a big day for teachers and staff. Everyone's, you know, happy to report, I think, so far. I haven't heard from any of the teachers yet, but I've seen them, but I haven't heard from them since I sent out my, hey, are you guys ready for tomorrow emails? So, I could be ignoring me on that one. But we start off tomorrow, there's some, my first line there is some of our upcoming PD topics. We start off tomorrow with some restorative practices, which is going to be ongoing this year. And tomorrow, we'll be talking about some, I have illuminate refreshers and instructional timelines and PLCs. So, our focus this year for PD will be school culture and then using our data appropriately as a team. The school culture pieces, our restorative practices, school-wide PBIS, and then the data and the PLCs, our illuminate refreshers, our instructional timelines and our, kind of, our PLC work together. All right, so we're kind of focusing on two things. It's been really the focus that we've had since I started. So, I, you know, there's nothing new or shocking to teachers that's coming at them this year. A lot of it is refreshing, but what we're moving into now in the third year is now we've learned this stuff and now it's time to start using it appropriately. So, we will start tomorrow morning, 8:00 PM, with restorative practices. I'll lead that practice this year, the PD this year again. And we will have some guests from RISA for some of our PLC and also for our PBIS. They'll be coming in throughout the week, so we should have a good group of people coming in to talk to our staff and get them ready to go. But I did want to talk about sting time. And you can't see it up there over here where we're looking. Sting time is something that we have going this year. If you recall, last year, we had a seven-hour day and each student had an hour of intervention. This year, we're back to a six-hour day, but we have 30 minutes of intervention and/or homework support for students built in and that's called sting time. So, right after lunch for our students from 12:26 to 12:57 will be their half hour of sting time. And this excludes, of course, seniors that are already gone. They may be dual enrolled or they may be at, dual enrolled or at middle college. We have tech students that won't be there for that. So, those intervals won't be assigned to a sting time or sting hour. So, what sting is, is, and there's no fancy acronym. We try to think of something special, you know, we're really racking our brains, students and teachers interacting and never giving up, you know, stuff, something like that. But we just couldn't figure out something that wasn't too corny. So, we are just calling it sting time for now. And during this time, teachers will deliver either our math intervention or reading intervention through Delta Math, which is a program we had last year, or corrective reading, which is a program we started last year as well. We'll be delivering those two programs for our students or teachers will facilitate a homework support class. So, what we're really doing is we are taking last year's intervention hour and we're taking peak hour, if you recall that from a few years ago, and we are combining them and kind of making this sting hour. So, a student can either have an intervention course, and this is again, like Susan talked about, based on their scores from Mstep, NWEA or math testing, and also our screeners for corrective reading and Delta Math. So, we'll figure out where these students land. And a lot of that work's already been done based on their scores last year for the second semester and their Mstep and those, and their NWEA scores. Students will be placed in appropriate courses and then be remediated appropriately. Teachers will deliver that intervention for them. We will then review these student scores throughout the year periodically at our early release PLCs and at our SST meetings because perhaps there's a student that may be in math intervention for the first quarter and the second quarter they need the English intervention, so we can have the opportunity to switch them around. There may be someone who's in homework support that may need the math intervention, so they go to that. So, that's always going to be kind of fluid and moving. Now, with the homework support classes, it's not just going to be, you know, Mr. Oki's, you know, he's the math teacher normally and then we just send a bunch of kids, random kids, to him. We're going to find those students that need his support through his classroom. He's going to identify students that need homework support, maybe not intervention, but some more homework time and those students will be in his class. Now, down the road, he may go to the next teacher's classroom that, they may say, listen, Mr. Oki, so-and-so needs, so my English, needs some help in English, some support, some extra help. Can I take him for the next quarter? And they can kind of move it like that, okay? So, we're hoping for a real fluid, moving thing here. A lot of moving parts to it, but we're hoping that it gets the students what they need either through intervention or homework support or both throughout the year. And again, the focus on those areas is going to be reading and math. So, that's the big idea behind sting time and we're hoping, you know, we're hoping again to, some students are upset because they didn't have homework time last year. So, this, for those that were upset, this is the, you know, the gift we're giving back. So, again, we feel we have the staff in place that are able to deliver some of these interventions to our teachers, the homework staff. I mean, the teachers that are involved in the homework classes for now are very excited about it and to have it back. And it's not going to be something where they sit back and just kind of kick back and just go ahead and do your work and I'll come. It's they're going to provide support. So, they're actually going to be tutoring almost during that homework support as needed in those kinds of sting hours. So, that's sting time. And I can answer questions about that one in a second if you have any. And I just put one last point on there, long-term subs. We hope, we begin the year with a long-term sub for Mrs. Guns. She had her baby a couple of weeks ago. Actually, brought him up the other days, or brought her up the other day. She's very cute. I think she'll be on until November sometime. We do have that position filled with a long-term. Sarah Wall is going to be here. And we do have still two openings, special education teacher in the junior high school and para professional in junior high school that we have been interviewing. We interviewed for the para job today. We may have another candidate tomorrow for that and we have been working hard on the special ed opening too. One of our candidates was sick today. So, we're hoping to get a couple more of those tomorrow as well. That's all I got.
Are you guys picking like kind of how Susan is going through and picking which students are going to math, which students are going to English, not letting them decide?
Yeah, that was, for the homework help support, yes, yeah. Because one of the things with peak was students could sign up or go to wherever they wanted to. We're trying to eliminate that. We don't want the chaos in the hallways.
Right.
So, they'll be, when they go somewhere, they're assigned somewhere, they'll be there until a certain time.
So, they're just going with their friends over here even though they need help there?
Yes, 13, you know, 40 kids in this class and three in this class.
Yeah.
It won't, it won't be like that. And class sizes of those are, you know, we do lose a lot of seniors in groups throughout the day, so class sizes are smaller than a, it's not a 30-class, you know, group. They're in the twenties, you know, in the lower twenties.
What drove to having it after lunch instead at the end of the day?
We felt that we could, I think the staff felt that that was probably the best time to get our students. End of the day, they're burnt out. They don't want to be intervened anymore. They don't want to deal with more math numbers or, you know, extra math at the end of the day. You know, we kind of put a poll out there to the staff. They agreed that, we had morning, afternoon or at the end of the day and they agreed to the afternoon. They thought we get the best bang for our buck there during the middle of the day. And of course, those students that may be going to Bluewater or maybe going to Tech or those places, when they, if they start to need intervention, we will then intervene ourselves and take a scheduling and see what we can do to get them some more support here. Some of the tech students, they have the option also when they return to come back and join a classroom or join a teacher for support. But this year, the decision is made, we're going to go back to allowing the tech students to leave at, when they get back. Because they don't have that, they wouldn't arrive in time for much of any of the last hour of the day. At this point, I think it's 2:35. They get back and 2:55, we're out. Last year, they were back at 2:15-ish, so they had time to go to that seventh hour, which is that they were worried about last year, but, you know, we tried something new.
Any chance to use peer-to-peer?
Peer-to-peer, we have, yeah, we have, we have the peer-to-peer program. Also, Mr. Giancarlo is back. He's got a program called sting as well and I was talking today about there may be a misconception of what's sting and what's not sting. So, sting hour is what we're going to have and I'm not asking to rename his program, but he's got a sting program, which is also like a mentor or, gosh, mentor for students, study partners, things like this, tutors. And that'll be towards the end of the day. So, that's an option for students to come back towards the end of the day, be them in peer-to-peer's throughout the day. Not only here, but also at the elementary schools as well.
Keep with the name and just call it like something sting, something?
Yeah, yeah. He's got, he's got a great acronym for it and I forgot what it was today. I was looking at it. It's very good. So, I'm probably going to let him, yeah, I'll probably let him keep it, you know. I don't know, I'm just.
See if you trademark it.
Yeah, he probably did. Now that you say that, he's got a great logo and everything, so I'm probably, I probably shouldn't bring it on there.
All right. Thank you.
I think so, yeah. Principal, a couple of things, you know, we have the athletic appreciation award and we've been giving that to people that I feel, you know, they go over and above or do things that maybe we just can't, you know, help with the school here or whatever. And a couple of people this week, there are actually families that I wanted to honor with that because, the first family, they are members of the boosters, but they do pay to play. And the pay-to-play thing, sometimes the booster, what the boosters do is fantastic and, you know, over and above what I know a lot of other boosters from other schools do. But our, our pay-to-play is interesting because, you know, once it's built up so they have enough credits for their children to play in sport, it's free. Well, these people are boosters, but their pay-to-play is already paid up and they go over and above. We know that the concession stand is going to be ran efficiently. They set up, they break down, they're out there helping with, I mean, so many different things other than that. But the fact that they've already accumulated all their pay-to-play for their children to finish their careers, they're, they're still here doing, you know, great things. Not that other people aren't, you know, I love to give awards to everybody, but even myself, if we have dual events, I've left, say, one facility to go to another or field to go to another field and I know that, you know, they'll call me, hey, this is going on or this is going on and so they go through it over and above. And so, I asked them to come today if I could show appreciation to Mr. and Mrs. Strickland for all their hard work that they've done, not just this year, but all the good stuff. And they keep me on my toes as well too, so, you know, fix the website. But I do appreciate all that you do and, you know, that's just something that you know that we do notice and appreciate all you guys do. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
But it's their turn to talk, they're leaving.
To keep me on my toes, see? But it's good. Appreciate you. The next one, one of the things that we did, the change is, you know, we had football over there and soccer. We had people all over and I just wanted to try something new this year with having a new football program and, you know, you've been very accommodating and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, we've got, you know, a lot of seniors over there, juniors and upperclassmen. You've got kids on the swing sets and you've got young kids coming. It was just something I thought we should look at changing. Plus, with the weight room being over here, it's just seem more accommodating to have football over here. So, Josh Esch is, you know, basically, you know, it's probably fractured him just a little bit, but, you know, he doesn't start till 5:30, football is over. So, now we have football back here, junior high back here. It's reducing the amount of paint we have to put in the field, so I know Crete and Mark are happy about that, you know, keeping everything central over here. So, but with that being said, one of the things that we had concerns about is everybody going in the locker room and, you know, bringing mud in and stuff like that. So, I put a thing out to one of our parents here about, hey, you know, I know your son helped build some benches and next thing you know, this family didn't buy, build one, they built four, so we can put them outside by the girls and the boys and they go out there with their flip flops, not bring mud in and they also look really nice and they're from the bleachers. They're from the bleachers that we, you know, from the elementary, so we utilize that. But it turned out to be, I think, a good family moment, but going back there with them and helping, watching them finish it up, to be honest with you, it was just inspiring because this family spent a whole family weekend, they said, and it's Dave Ryan and his family and I couldn't thank you enough. So, I know you, I knew you would do that, but we do appreciate it. Everybody, all the kids appreciate it and I know they're out there enjoying it. So, thank you very much. So. See, that's why it worked. It definitely worked, so, sorry about that. But I do appreciate it and they look fantastic and all the kids are using them. And it's, I think, I haven't had one complaint yet from building the ground, so I think it's definitely working. So, thank you very much. Report, not a whole lot to report. I'll just go through it, as you know. We had the commercial, I hope you all liked it. A thank you to Brad and thank you to Matt and took part in it. I gotta thank Eric Snyder who, you know, choreographed it with us and I thank everybody that showed up. It was just trying to get something out to positive and show that we are, you know, a united family here from athletics to the band. The band, Josh took his drone and did some nice shots, so I hope you liked it and we've had some really good responses from it, some emails, some phone calls, so, from outside the school. So, I think that went off very well and I thank them for our help with that. Athletically, right now, we have 93 high school athletes, 57 boys, 36 girls. That's including the JV volleyball. So, we're doing real football. We have 26, so we do not have a JV at this time. I sat down with Brad last week, kind of went over a few things, what we're looking to project, if we can get another five, 10 kids out hopefully. But understand that a lot of the teams that we play do not have JV either. There's only about four schools that have potential JVs, so we're trying to target that to hope to get some JV games. That is our goal. But we had 26 boys, we have 20 in soccer as well, which, that's not surprising, but, you know, that's a lot of boys, 46 right there at the varsity level and then we have cross country, another 10. So, very well represented with the boys and then in the, with the girls volleyball is, they've got two full teams there. Cheerleading is going to be fully, you know, maximum as well with the sideline cheer and again, we're very happy. JV saw, JV football started, I'm sorry, junior high football started today, they had 19, 20 kids out there and, you know, I think when school starts, I mean, that Taffel thing was nothing but a success. The flag football thing, nothing, because, I mean, the numbers are showing. So, you know, I think- because, I mean, the numbers are showing. So, you know, I think, I'd be, with our football staff that we have in place, for the most part, they're young, with a good leader with Mark, you know, I'm encouraged where we're headed in the next couple of years for football. So I really am. So, um, and the flag football has got great, you know, great athletes, and then I know the junior high with Adam Bergen, he's really working it hard. And if you had an opportunity, or some of you did not, and try to share some pictures. The Ford Field Experience was fantastic. Our kids were down there. I was mad. I had a big boat party at eighty-five degrees, and I'm in Ford Field, but when I got down there, it was very exciting. It really was. We had a great turnout of parents, twenty junior high kids, the whole football team out there practicing. It's a conversation with one of the, one of the head football, I'm sorry, former Lion greats. There are a few out there. And, um, then afterwards, we ate dinner. Um, everybody had a chance to just kind of relax in one of the Lions dens, so it was just overall a great experience and methods, definitely representing themselves well. So I was really proud about that. Um, just to go through real short, um, soccer, they're, they won today. I'm not sure the final score coming in, but it was three to one when I left. So they're now three and one, and they're posed for a very good season, and we're hoping for a, a three pe, you know, three straight league championship, as well as maybe even a district championship this year. Volleyball started off with SC four this past Friday, and they played class eight schools and class B schools. They choose SC four, and they represented very well. They did struggle a little against Marysville, but a lot of people do that. Chippewa Valley and Marlette, who's in our league, we were right there. We could have beat Marlette. So I think our girls were nervous that they were in the game. Um, so there's gonna be some growing pains there, but I think Walt's got a great program going, and Logan's doing a great job with JV. Junior High starts practicing already, and their first game is, you know, the first, uh, September ninth. So, um, spring, fall sports is definitely on the get-go. We held the football scrimmage out here the other day, and it was really about an exciting day. Boosters opened up the concession stand. Uh, we had three teams here, and, uh, one of the teams pulled out at the last, pretty much the last minute, but it worked out very well, and, um, I, I think you'll see some promising things out there for, from our boys this year in football. We also have our cross-country meets are starting. We're competing. We're doing a great job. Tyler Carlson's getting phone calls, college scouts already, so very excited about that. And our Bass team, I don't know if you saw, they competed. They didn't get as many points as they did the year before, but they definitely represented themselves as champions and represented our, you know, Memphis school very well. Cheer and, um, our sideline cheer, junior high and varsity, uh, they're doing a lot of tumble. They've been paying it out of their account to have, you know, get, uh, learn some extra things or stuff like that. So, you know, we're, we're expected to do some great things with cheerleading this year as well. So, um, overall, I think fall sports is starting off with a, a great buzz, and, and we're getting phone calls already about flag football, so should be an exciting fall season. So, that's my wrap. Oh, and one good thing is we did eligibility check. Out of the ninety-three, uh, high school athletes, we only had one athlete that unfortunately was not eligible. I gotta thank Mr. Caraffa, and I have to thank him. Uh, met with the parents a couple of months ago. Those parents have paid the classes, and he's seventy-three percent final, uh, got seventy-three percent of the last class he needs to get eligible, done, completed, and most likely, we're hoping for, we're pulling for him. He's worked hard to get that last one up so he can actually play in the first game. So we may have a clean slate. But we did have one going in, and, um, again, thanks Matt and thanks Kim. You know, they got after it with the parents, and they've done, this kid's really done a good job. So, uh, academically, we're, I think we're set off pretty well as well. So, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Um, some highlights that, since the last board meeting last month. Um, the eighteen-nineteen academic year state aid note, the final payment was made on that uh, just last week with the August state aid payment. So our state aid notes from last year are now paid in full, um, and we did not take out any state aid notes for this year. So, uh, those are complete at the moment. Um, teachers pay, last pay for the eighteen-nineteen academic year is, will be, uh, this past Friday, and then the first pay for the, this academic year, nineteen-twenty, is September sixth. Um, pay rate increases have were all approved at the last board meeting, when into effect, um, on August twenty-third pay, so this past pay. Audit field work, uh, was completed first week of August, so that went well. Um, auditors came out. They spent four days, uh, said everything was good, was in good order. Um, and we're hoping to have, uh, the completed reports in time for the September board meeting. Um, gave about a six-week timeframe of, of when they would have those done. Um, so it'd be right up, kind of pushing up against that September board meeting. If not by September, it would for sure be for the October board meeting. Um, one other exciting thing for me was I got, was accepted into the MSBO, uh, which is the Michigan School Business Officers Business Managers Academy. Uh, that started, the first meeting we had was this past Thursday at Oakland Schools ISD. That consists of eleven, eleven meeting dates, in which, uh, it's a full-day's class. Um, each, each meeting dates on a different topic, and it's with approximately thirty of my colleagues holding the same position, in which I'll be able to create relationships and, and a good networking opportunity for me, as well as kind of learning a little bit more of, of what it takes to, to be successful in this position. Um, at the completion of it, I will have a certification for business, a certified business manager through the MSBO. Um, representative from SETSEG was out, completed a payroll audit for our workers' policy comp, or compensate, our workers' compensation policy. Property tax payments are starting to come in, so that's a good thing. And, um, certified the quarterly financials for the medicated, or Medicaid Administrative Outreach Program.
Great.
How long is that program? The eleven classes? Is it through the school year, or is it a little longer?
Yep, it, it started August twenty-second, and then the last one will be June twenty-fifth. So it's once a month.
And again, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ten other reports?
I'm doing something a little different this year, and I'm asking all of our directors to add into our reports. So make sure you take a second, just look in there. Um, you know, obviously, the administration is president of the meetings. We'll talk about kind of the highlights on there. It's Matt and Susan will look at instructional things, but there's a lot of good information. So Crete will be updating, Brian will be updating. Um, Brian said he'd do a lot better next month. He's a little, uh, weeds right now, trying to get everything ready for next week. But, uh, we had a new server this year. Uh, we ordered some Chromebook carts, so some different things going on. Uh, with transportation, our four buses arrived two weeks ago. Um, so James, uh, the mechanic, is moving all the radios and the cameras and everything from our old buses to the new buses, and then we'll be looking to get rid of probably three of our older buses at this time. So we'll probably lose the same way the last time. Um, the auction of talented care before us. He puts it on the site, and, uh, hopefully get a high number for him.
Great. Those, those reports aren't in our packet. I'll start this and some.
If you go to the agenda, it's linked under reports, so I'm sorry, I'll open the re.
So if you click on the reports.
If you click, I'm sorry that I didn't, yeah. So if you click on that, it'll take you to all of them. And that's how I'll link it every time, is right on the report card.
I was always trying to.
On each one, yeah. I, I apologize for that, but yes.
No, no worries.
So, and that's the goal, is just so everybody can kind of keep up to date. You guys can kind of be running on time. So that's.
I saw in the technology, you're able to use a portion of sinking fund.
Yeah, so we, when we did sinking fund, we, um, allocated fifty grand a year for technology, so that kind of helps that. So you can buy student computers, so anything that's dress instruction, so that's where that can come out.
That's great.
So how do they decide who gets the buses?
What's that?
I don't know, they decide which ones.
Ask Crete that, too. And it's kind of a seniority thing, um, but.
Oh, yes.
I do not want to be involved.
Yeah.
I don't think that's involved either. He just goes with it.
Let the ladies figure it out.
That's right. They know the hierarchy.
Is it working out?
It will.
Good.
All right. Do we have any audience participation? Move on to correspondence, then. All we have this time around is the Truman School Law Notes.
Did we do approve the food service budget and general fund budget under business director? Did I get it?
It's just in there. It doesn't need to be, yeah, it doesn't need to be approved at this time. The first amendment will be done, what do we say, by October?
Yep.
I didn't have anything to note from the law notes, somebody else does.
There was just a quick one about the, uh, IEPs and administrative participation. I didn't know.
Yeah.
We have, our administrators pretty much attend to all IEPs. Um, one of the administrators, at least, or the special ed director. So, um, just on that note, too, with Robert Melvin Lee here, she's held two meetings prior to. Our staff has been great to come in. She is on top of things. I think it's gonna be a huge asset for us, for our, our program. It's good they have her here.
Anything else on correspondence? All right, uh, move on to old business. Then we have a adoption of the old policies. First up, twenty-four thirty-point-one, two point seven hundred.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the old policies. Twenty-four thirty-point-one, two point seven hundred program is presented.
Support. Motion by Ms. CQ, supported by Mr. Parry. Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions. Under, under twenty-four thirty-one point oh one, just so I'm clear, um, are we, I, I understand this time of year, and certainly spring sports, uh, but are we actually taking temperature and humidity readings in the middle of winter?
Do we, no, it's only done when we feel it's, it's giving a.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because it doesn't actually, it just says we're supposed to do it all the time, but it seems like that would be. Just a question about two four four zero point oh one, and how that relates to, I just want to make sure I'm reading this properly. So that first one, two four four zero point oh one, and then is that at all in conflict with twenty-six oh five, or twenty-six oh five, um, I think it's twenty-six oh five. No, it's not that one. Yeah, it's the next one, twenty-six twenty-three. So twenty-six twenty-three has third grade students who do not need that section blanked out. But in the first one, twenty-four forty oh one, it says that we will provide a six-week summer program, the opportunity to attend a six-week, uh, week summer program for students of third grade that don't have basic, et cetera. So are those, those seem to be in conflict. Maybe I'm just reading it wrong. First one says we're not gonna provide transportation, which makes sense. It says we'll provide, and then below it says, it seems to me like it says we're not.
Which one is this, twenty-six twenty-three?
Twenty-six twenty-three.
I think, I mean, the way I read it is that it's basically striking that last part and making it part of the first one. Cause that's saying if they don't need it, summer school is the same. You know what I mean? I read it as student assessment. That's how they're gonna assess the students. In twenty-six twenty-three, and then the other one was.
I, and that's kind of the way I look at it, too, is that it's not needed in twenty-six twenty-three because it's already stated in twenty-four four oh one. Then with that one, with that, it's, we do not provide the transportation with that.
Yeah, that makes sense. That part makes sense. Then the only other one I have is twenty-four sixty-four. So in twenty-four sixty-four, we've got the one box checked, grades K to twelve. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be any criteria, so do we choose criteria or do we choose not? Are we choosing, are we not choosing criteria on purpose?
Correct. And that was kind of by, based on the recommendation, that to not get into all of the different criteria to put in there.
So what is our criteria then?
I guess it's gonna be based on teacher recommendation and test scores. Um, that one was, that we, I didn't have enough education on that, so that's what we went with, is being known as recommendation.
I'd just like to make sure we got some written some, somewhere, where we stick it in there, whatever we're, we're going to use, just so there's some criteria.
So I guess, for example, maybe over in, we send the kids to K-PAC, or they send kids here. We used to have.
AAA.
We don't, no longer. We do it just in-house now. We don't send them anymore.
Okay.
That being considered a given.
Yeah, we have written criteria for what students are selected for.
Is that the A three now?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was called A three then, too. Now K-PAC had to pull out, so we just do it ourselves.
Okay.
I'd just like to see those criteria inserted into this and stuff, whether it's tonight or another time.
Yep.
So is it like teacher recommendation? Like what is the criteria for the A three program?
It's based on, um, step scores, NWEA scores, and assessment scores, being a teacher recommendation.
Okay.
So we'll pull out twenty-four sixty-four then.
Is there one in my school? Cause I would imagine like A three doesn't, is there a specific program that.
It's in our IEP courses, I guess.
Do we still have the program when they go to La Rima? Remember? You know, we're not with S.A.S.A. or whatever.
Yeah. We, we've had a few different ones that, they're no longer, I think, the place we had Michigan State coming out and doing the higher level math. But that, no longer was funded, that Michigan State, because they don't want to drive them up as anymore. The program, the Math and Science Center, what they made, it no longer requires you.
Any others? Look in that, uh, two thousand series?
I'm sorry, nobody has one. I have one more. I'm sorry. I forgot about this one. Twenty-five ten. Although I'm not sure, it would be, it might be difficult to satisfy A through H. I, I think B is, is appropriate. Um, it's actually been brought up by board members or former board members before. The rest of them.
Was the magazines?
It was, but.
Flora had an issue with.
Yeah.
Now did that get changed?
What do you mean?
Like there was, I remember Cheryl Flora bringing up the magazines. We're very persuaded.
So I sent some for you guys to see, the preview. I sent a big packet for you guys to look at. Did you get that? Did you, did you see it?
Cheryl, Cheryl has been taken.
Cheryl. Oh, okay. So maybe I sent it to her. I sent her a packet of everything that we had, uh, that we ordered, uh, last year, and then I hadn't heard anything back, so I reordered the same ones.
You'd look at the ad for your advice.
I would. I mean, I think that, I would certainly look at that when I looked at the textbook.
Yeah, cause they're impressionable. I think it should be definitely an bias.
Right.
And not pushing kids one way or another.
How would you evaluate that? It's created bias that falls within your.
Well, we would have to take that through BSIT. We'd be our, our past residents or anything like that, and then you'd have a group when reading it, and I guess it kind of goes the majority on that. It feels, it's super.
Was it New York Times or something like that?
Uh, it's upfront. I think it's upfront.
Smacking by the New York Times, yeah. Scholastic has one. Um, there's a couple, there's a science.
I guess Scholastic will probably be on bias more than New York.
You would think so. I, I mean, there's. You would think so, I mean, there's, I wish I had that packet, I would give it to you, there was, I mean, I had a good group of amount of, you know, there's everything from the science to social studies, had some, English, I think, had one, there was high school and junior high. They're all a little bit different, but they're all the same, you know, I mean, they have the same stories, but just a little different, it's just
All different viewpoints?
Well, not really, I mean, they put one on the front cover of this one, this one's, the story's hidden inside, and the story that's hidden on this one is on the front cover of this one, so it's, but this, you know...
And sometimes though, if they put something controversial, they always, the ones we get anyway, have like, opposing people, where they talk about both.
Yeah, they do both, pros and cons, and you know, decide for yourself, you know, those kind of things, I taught with the upfront when I was a teacher, and, you know, it was fairly, for me, I thought it was fairly just factual, you know, but they did have the, you decide, you know, here's the two sides, and I would sometimes split my class into two, have them talk about both sides, and, you know. But I'm more than, happy to bring them to the DSIT to just have groups check them out and kind of make a determination that way.
Yeah, that's something that she was very passionate about, that she wanted to see something come up with.
Any others? We have, uh, both of them first, before I can actually
I will amend my motion to approve the adoption of NOLA policies, point four thirty point one through twenty-seven hundred. Except for we'll pull out twenty-four sixty-four and twenty-five ten, B, right, or the B?
We can amend.
Okay.
And then twenty-five ten.
Okay.
To include option B.
Okay, so then twenty-five ten to include option B.
Support is in it.
We have a motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mr. Parry, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, to new business, first up on A, we have amendment to salary contracts, calendar days adjusted.
I'll make a motion to approve limited salary contracts for calendar days, as presented.
Approved, or support.
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mr. Foot. Any discussion?
It's had to have a day for the leap year, for when they do a daily rate, that's what
Is there any way that we can protect for that? How to capture the calendar days of future contracts?
Sorry, I just got to an event.
Yeah.
Trying to make notes.
No, I'm just wondering if you could
Just, you can put verbiage in there.
Verbiage in there, except in leap year, it would be two or whatever.
One additional day.
Maybe.
Or one less day.
Just a thought, so we don't miss it. Okay, we have motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Trish Burleson contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Trish Burleson for the twenty, for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty as presented.
Support, please, now.
We have a motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. Fox, any discussion?
It's a continuation contract, there's no increase or anything. Trish and I sit down several times each year to kind of look at her budget, where she's at, and if there's, you know, if they're making money, because they're a separate account, this year there was, looking at it, we spent money on redoing floors and things like that, so they actually came in to red a little bit, I think by grand, but it was something that right now, there's no room for arrangement.
Is this summer employees' continuation of final minimums, have you ever missed those minimums?
Not that I'm aware of. She's very good at making sure she has the
I mean, they're adding a third round.
Staff, yes, staff needed for the number of students that are here.
When, now I know they're adding a third round, which is hiring more staff, correct?
She will add staff as that room is filled, so the baby room now will be zero to one,
Okay.
and then that, that kind of intermediate room will be one to three, and then the potty trained, and then three years old, they go across the big kid room.
This used to be that when they were, they were in the baby room until they were potty trained.
And then, that's where we
So we had some older kids walking around there, like, come on!
Where we needed that separation. So, the one thing that's mandatory for that, because they still are changing diapers, is to have a sink in there. So we had to order a sink, there's no plumbing in there, so it's gotta be one of the basin sinks, or a portable one, so it's on order, it should be here in the next week.
And then, when are you thinking, or like, anybody said that at this time, it's not
Well, I totally agree with you in January.
In January, you're looking into it?
Just to, when we get into the school year, her and I'll sit down, that would give Adam some time to make sure the numbers are working.
Okay, I know it's an added room, added staff, added responsibilities, you know, is that why she wasn't included in like the administration, where we give the five percent to
Yes, why, yes.
Part of the admin?
Correct, well, she's their separate account, so that's why she was not added. I would consider it.
We already looked at hers earlier.
We, yeah, she received a raise.
We already looked at hers and gave her a raise earlier.
Back in, I think that was back in January.
Yeah, so we
So I heard, it was last year, it was July. She went to salary.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, NOLA policy one forty-two dot seven, orientation, first reading of the revision.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading slash revision of the NOLA policy. Zero one four two point seven, orientation as presented.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the first reading of NOLA policy five thousand, five thousand eight hundred ninety-five for the students. We have eighty policies here.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of NOLA policy five thousand through fifty-eight ninety-five.
Motion by Mr. Parry, or by Mrs. O'Connor. Discussion?
Just more of a general question, but some of the, some of the ones that are, that are completely stricken, like fifty-six ten oh two, a couple of the other ones, fifty-seven ten, fifty-seven twenty, are those, did we strike those because the Student Code of Conduct covers basically the topics of those?
One?
Yeah, yeah, maybe fifty-seven ten to seventy twenty, because they're right next to each other.
Fifty-seven twenty?
Fifty-seven ten and twenty are right next to each other.
Yes, and it's covered in there, and these are not, so when there's no MCL or any Michigan-Similac or anything, that, they're not a record, it's just a recommendation, but yes, that would be why they were not needed.
Okay, that makes sense.
School choice, the ten percent threshold? We calculate that in moderate
You tell them the policy.
There were a hundred kids that came on this, fifty-one thirteen. And I didn't write which version.
Version, sorry?
Yeah, it says that you have to notify somebody if you exceed ten percent of your population.
Fifty-three thirteen?
Fifty-one thirteen, sorry?
Fifty-one thirteen.
Yeah, it's in the school choice, saying there's notification requirement of getting some, it's ten percent.
That's always the body.
Department of Education.
We are currently, have not had any of that. When we, I guess, you know, for us to lose eighty kids, we would, we would be looking at it way before that.
Right.
So ten percent, you know, we're at eight fifty, or eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty students roughly, so we started to get into that. It is, and you know
So if we really had a hundred?
Correct.
Um, do we count the kids that come to the school? In the summer? At school trust? It doesn't say.
It would just, looks like it would just be our students basically.
And then, just because we got the cell phone policy and the packets for the kids, we can't live without them. Did we make sure that that matches? I felt like there was a little bit of a difference in tolerance level between this policy and the policy that was sent home
Did you come in ever again?
Fifty
Fifty-one thirty-six.
One thirty-six. And maybe I didn't read the other one fully, but I thought in here it said that you are not even to have it out anywhere in class. I don't remember if it said that in the student policy, just something to look at.
Your current policy for cell phones, is it allowed in the classroom? They're not allowed, correct? Apparently not allowed to have out in classrooms.
It's just passing time, which, of the four hands.
Yeah, common areas, passing times. Matter of fact, I did send a survey to teachers on two things, hats in the classroom, something we've been toying with, and cell phones, and they were, it was eighty-three percent to whatever's left, seventeen percent, yeah, for opposing cell phones in the classroom, and then the hats was fifty-one forty-nine to allow the hats in the classroom. So that's something we gotta talk about, change it too, because we, last year's policy, they voted they didn't want hats in the classroom. They're allowed to wear them in hallways and common areas like phones, but this year they said, if it narrows the margins, that they're okay with hats, so it's a discussion we're having tomorrow.
Because you're like literally at half, you're right half and half.
It's like, I mean, fifty-one forty-nine, I said majority rules, and we have to, you know, you know, but it's awfully close, so.
Yeah. Was there a difference in like the teachers, between the junior high and high school that cared about the cell phones, I'm surprised at seventy percent.
Cell phones is pretty much unanimous, there were a few in the high school that thought, yeah, there's a few in the highs, most of the yeses were in the high school. I think all were.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, all.
Any others?
More just curious, so there was the EpiPen, the fifty-three thirty, and the opioid one, fifty-three thirty something opioid one. It, the EpiPen, it talked about us having to have one here, somebody trained to use it, we have one in both schools, and it's, who's trained to use it?
We were just trained, Friday.
It's in our first aid kit.
Yeah.
And does that, is that the same for the Narcan?
No, we don't have any Narcan, I don't think.
Okay, I was assuming that that was the case, but there's a policy saying that you can do that if that is available. We need to have them trained for that, to the test.
It's actually easier than the EpiPen.
Is this an oralism?
It's nasal.
It's nasal.
Well, we took the first aid training and say, fire department. Okay, so you're not gonna be
Jeff would probably be more than willing to provide training.
Yeah.
I went to the last, you went to the last, did they talk about that one, no, Narcan?
Nope, no. He just talked about what, you know, our basics that we do.
We've got a couple of meetings till we adopt this, but unfortunately, we probably need to have this one.
We'll take that as an action.
Yeah.
To line up training and
Availability and that.
It's got MCL.
Yeah, go over to the school's certified. And then fifty-five one four oh one, it's all stricken, except that last, maybe they just missed it, there's, students aren't required to have permits or to drive to school, and then for their vehicles to be
Yes, they have to have those. Fifty-five four oh one?
Fifty-five one four point oh one. It's mostly stricken, I think they just let, did the last sentence, but I thought I'd seen kids with permits, so I don't know if they're striking that, or
As a matter of fact, this year we have a new permit system actually set up that we're gonna have them use. And Officer Gunnery checks their, you know, driver's license, runs the vehicle.
Yeah.
We were just
I might have missed like the end of it. So do we just not need it, and you're
Not needed, it is covered in the grant, yes.
Okay.
Okay, go through the one I have then. We're covered already. And fifty-two hundred under attendance, there's there's the box checked for daily, but the tax report struck out, so I'm not sure if we need to capture that tax or not. About halfway down.
Daily is checked?
Yeah, daily is checked, but the options are the paragraph of
Oh, the board with it?
Yeah, it's struck out. Says the board shall consider each student assignment program authorized to be in regular attendance for this program, provided that the machine reports daily.
Yeah, we should be adding that.
And then fifty-two hundred. Then fifty-three ten in health services? We didn't take any options, it says in compliance of law, our education requirements is to submit periodic health examinations to and we didn't check anything. Where did we check anything, or just
Periodic health examinations.
Just ending it at that. And then the, there's a continuation after that. That's like second page.
Okay.
Those two little paragraphs are a little too large, John?
Yeah. Something else to note, in fifty-five seventeen, it's the bullying policy, within the policy, we're required to post in the building. I wanna make sure we capture that, so we're not violating our own policy. Bullying. Can't say exactly where it is in the policy, but it says must be posted in all buildings, reported on an annual basis to Department of Education. Reference to the policy somewhere.
It's in the second section, that one, under notification.
And to be able to student handbook at least reference to it.
So I don't, I don't have an issue with the policy, and I just want to make sure that we capture the
We do report, but we do not currently post this, yes.
Yeah, that's all I had, I had a lot of similar questions where it seemed like we weren't taking policies, but they were probably covered by the handbook. taking policies, but they were probably covered by the handbook. Anybody have anything else? I don't know. Any further discussion? Yeah. Uh, just, uh, you can say fifty-two hundred as a matter of.
Okay, like a support three hundred, you know, policies five thousand to date in five, amending fifty-two hundred as discussed.
Motion by Mr. Price, supported by Mrs. O'Connor, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Deal of policies six thousand through six thousand eight hundred and fifty.
I will make a motion to approve the first reading of deal of policies six thousand through six thousand eight fifty's finances presented.
Motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. McQ. Discussion. Sixty-one fifty talks about tuition. I didn't think we collected tuition.
We do not, um, but it was recommended that we need it in there, in case you ever got to the point.
Well, we do for preschool, right? I mean, that's not really, it's like a fee, is that really?
Yeah.
It's called tuition.
But this would be a little different than that, but yes.
Okay.
Just recommend we keep it in the know.
Okay.
There's very rare circumstance that would happen with school of choice and changes.
Like what? Yeah, what would allow you to?
Well, the way he explained it to us was if there was a student from out of district that wanted to attend, that we could charge them to do it, um, but I don't think, I don't know how it would go.
Hey, the other one I had was sixty-two twenty on budget preparation. We didn't have the estimate of student enrollment by grades, we had that struck out, but typically we make assumptions per student count when we develop the budget, write a new budget for X hour or X hour, so I think we should probably include that, um, add the management in there. Sixty-three twenty-five was procurement. It's struck out in a large section, we see with this. Wanted to understand the background of that.
Which?
I don't see a big strikeout.
Uh, section C, sixty-three twenty-five.
Paragraph that just talks about when seal bids require, 'cause our papers don't have the letters.
It goes procurement methods, there's micro purchases, small purchases, and sealed bids. And.
Oh, we didn't choose that section.
So all of C is?
So it's the paragraph, and then there's one, two, and three.
Yeah. So all under C is?
Just because we did not include that.
Okay.
So that's gonna be completely stricken, that whole section? Seal bids, yes. It looks like you took out the, put your subject line.
It, it shouldn't be struck.
I'm reading it as the requirement for a specific requirement where it's saying you have to do it, and then the feasibility.
It should be, it should not be struck. So that all, all that should be included, and then we chose the, um, an adequate number of qualified suppliers, instead of taking an exact number.
Sixty-four twenty-three is the use of credit debit cards. There's a line in there that super credit doesn't really submit for board approval position, idols authorized to use district credit cards conducting at the district business. This would be something new, but I haven't understood that in my past, for, to come to us for this, credit debit cards, and I don't.
Nobody has, we have one that's, uh, in the business office, nobody has it, except Sandra.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't give those up.
Okay. And then sixty-four twenty-four with the purchasing cards. Do we have those? Yes, the cards. The credit cards also.
Yeah, and that's the, the order.
Okay. I just noted that Noel doesn't recommend adoption of this policy, but I think I request for it, so then include it in there. Did they give you any background?
He did not, but he did recommend that we leave it in there.
Okay.
'Cause I, I was gonna strike it too, and then it's being.
So we don't have them?
We don't. Do you know that?
Yeah, debit card? Like this, like usually we're purchasing like assets, right? A little more pricey stuff?
Go ahead, go.
Cost controls?
Typically, they're used for, like, typically you have an expensive card for like when you travel and things, and purchasing cards are used for, you have to buy like supplies or, or things like that.
Specific things.
Usually. Okay, I don't have anything else, does anybody else have anything on the six thousand section? Yes, sixty-three twenty-five.
It's sixty-one and sixty-two.
Yep. Any further discussion? Or do you wanna venge your motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of deal of policies six thousand through sixty-eight fifty, of the amendments of sixty-two twenty and sixty-three twenty-five as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mr. Cook, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item F is Memphis Junior Senior High School Procedures Review.
Basically, if you're looking through there really quick, the blue highlighted are new additions, things that were, so I, I had happened upon this, when Mr. Gerstberger and I were kinda looking through some of the handbook, uh, last year, um, and we found a bunch of things that were in there that were out of date, or just didn't make sense, or no longer, um, you know, anything we did, uh, so there, anything you see in like the blue color are things we added, um, and nothing else was changed, the only things that were changed, if you look, um, anything blue was either added or changed, okay? So if what, then that blue one, we didn't touch it, uh, so really, there's not a lot, some of the stuff regarding honors graduation for seniors, um, honor society eligibility, our liaison officer was added, our college advisor was added, uh, some new media center expectations, kind of, um, based on our discussion with Don Smith, who's our new media center, um, person, uh, and, uh, pretty much everything else, we went through secretary's counselor. Just to kinda update this, uh, we have added MTSS, and there's also a link in there for electronic version, we'll post online, it kinda links to our MTSS handbook for parents to see. I highlighted the board policies in yellow, Laura and I were talking about, because they do reference a board policy in some of these here, so I, you know, so I highlighted those in yellow, and we were kinda looking back to see through the policy if they were still matching up, and we didn't see any discrepancies there. There's a strikeout, one part we took out was the top ten, we, since we don't, we no longer recognize the top ten, uh, that's now part of the honors recognition part, a little bit farther up there, um, and, and the work permit, so basically, this was like a student, uh, you know, it's a procedures book, and it was part of the, uh, student handbook overall, um, and we took this part out, and right now, what you have online, I believe, is just the, just the handbook with the code of con, code of conduct and athletic code of conduct, so we just kinda revise this part, we'll, we'll add to it at the, you know, if you guys agree, uh, we'll add this to it online, so this is now, I'll be updating it out there as well. So these are the procedures, it will be part of the handbook.
Code of conduct.
Code of, yeah, right, that's what, I always mix that part up.
Yeah, and as we adopt policies, there's gonna be some changes that line up under the old policies, so there'll be a few changes to make it all consistent and accurate. If this, are there any changes in board policy, we'll, we'll update this accordingly.
So you don't recognize a valedictorian at all?
Oh, yeah, we do that. It's on there, uh, but it just, we don't recognize like a top ten anymore.
All right, let's get a motion on the floor, so we can have further discussion if needed.
Any motion except for Memphis Junior Senior High School Procedures as presented?
Motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bob Seame. Any further discussion? Is that new for the, they already have honors calculus, physics, or AP class?
Yes, uh, where are you at there? Which one are you on?
Honors recognition.
Yes, that is something that, uh, Ms. Dackey and I looked at together, um, when we did update that to reflect some of our courses, calculus, physics, honors, place with classes.
That be difficult for some of the people in tech to not be recognized, or?
Um, no, I don't believe, so I believe we had a student last year, um, well, for honors, yeah, it might be a little difficult, I guess you could say, 'cause we're honoring the sum cum laude, magna cum laude, cum laude, um, I mean, a tech student can still take calculus, they can still take any of the AP courses while they're here, and we try to, we try to set the master schedule away so that they are still those, most of those courses are in the morning, so if it's a student that is dual enrolled or whatever, they, they have the opportunity to get those classes, yeah. And, and tech is just as eligible, just because if they leave after three hours, they're still just as eligible as, as anyone else, if they, to, to be honored for.
They dual enrollment, you know, for like AP classes, if they get a certain grade, they get point five honor point, do they get point five honor points for the dual enrollment college classes?
Uh, no.
No?
Just the AP bump, yeah. Yeah, we don't, we don't give them.
They don't get honor points for taking actual college class?
No, they get college credit. Yeah.
For the, uh, magna cum laude, you, like, uh, do we need to refine the magna? Because it says the three nines, so what, they have like a three nine, does it round up?
It should be three nine nine.
Yeah, I can, I can fix that. I don't know what's that, actually, I think we fixed that.
It's three nine nine.
Oh. I can fix that.
Yeah, you don't have to be, up to.
Two, okay.
How often is the college advisor gonna be at the school?
Every day.
Every day?
Yep, she's been here actually, uh, for the past, while she was here, two days last week, she's here, and her supervisor's at Michigan State told her she will be here from Monday to, today, on any day that I'm in the building, or supervisor's in the building. So I'm considered the supervisor of her, our college advisor, so if I'm here, she's, she's here.
That's different, but even the guidance counselor, the college advisor?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're, they're big difference.
There's not a big difference without.
Yeah, she's working, she works.
The guidance counselor used to do at the college, right, too?
Yeah.
She still will.
Yeah, she's still well, and Kim and her, Kim and our college advisor, her name is Claire Nowitzki, uh, they work, they, they meet weekly, and they talk about, you know, everything, so, um, we're, we meet weekly with her, but, um, her, her main role is, again, to, she works with our seniors, our juniors, uh, most, most of our upper class, our seniors, juniors, tenth grade, about preparing for college, or what's, what's, the seniors, especially applications, FAFSA, FAFSA, um, you name it, um, and then prepping the juniors, and also she works with our, with us, in conjunction with us, and our, um, EDPs, or the, it was career cruising, they've changed the name this year to, um, evolve her, it's a new system.
Zelo.
Zelo, way off, uh, so that's now the career cruising, she works in all those aspects, um, she's very excited, and she's very, um, energetic, so I'm looking forward to a good year with her. Kinda promote that college-going, uh, atmosphere, but not only that, she's promoting, you know, trades and everything else, so it's not necessarily you have to be, see her, be going to college, see her, just, if you got plans after high school, you talk to her, you know, she'll, she'll set you up.
Any further discussion? So we just have the ones I meant to the honors recognition.
Yeah.
Mr. Cook, you made the original motion.
I did, um, on page four, I just wanna make sure this is right, especially since it's our school, a valedictorian, salutatorian will be named following the seventh semester of the student year, so they should be named. I said amend my motion to fix that, as well as, uh, the three point nine nine on magna cum laude. That was it, huh?
No.
Oh, okay, I'll get that too.
And then the original support?
No, sorry.
Okay, we have, um, motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bob Seame, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're on to, uh, Chief Trupiano.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session at eight thirty-one, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act two, two six seven nineteen seventy-six, for the purpose of security planning.
Scored. Scored.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Haray?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook? Or Mr. Cook, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bob Seeng?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dirk?
Yes.